The December 21st Columbus City Council meeting will now come to order. In compliance, the Open Meeting Act revised Statute 84-1407. A current copy of this act is posted in the meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Hemer.
Here.
Dublonsky.
Here.
Kresha.
Here.
Lor.
Here.
Ruff.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Madam President.
Our Father. Thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. If at any time during this meeting anyone would like to address anything on the agenda, we'd invite you to come forward to the podium. We ask that you give your name, address, and we'd ask that you leave limit any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the December 7th, 2020 Board of Equalization meeting. Item 4B, minutes of the December 7th, 2020 City Council meeting. Item 4C, minutes of the December 7th, 2020 Community Development Agency meeting. Item 4D, reappointment of Ron Schilling to the Northeast Nebraska Area Agency on Aging for a three-year term. Item 4E, Resolution Number R20-141 approving the final acceptance of project completion associated with the Nebraska Department of Transportation Project URB-60656, Control Number 31990, Third Avenue, Eighth Street to South Fifth Street. Item 4F, Resolution Number R20-142 approving the Amendment A to the standard agreement and general conditions between the owner and construction manager for the Columbus Community Building Project. Item 4G, Finance Department reports. Item 4H, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and Council, is there anything you would like removed from consent status?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings.
Item 7A, Public Hearing, application of Mark Bierman for the Final Platte and Development Agreement of Eastview Subdivision, Fifth Street, and Third Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak toward this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close this public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7A1, Resolution Number R20-143 approving the Final Platte and Development Agreement.
Mr. Mayor, I move that Resolution Number R20-143 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number R20-143. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B, Public Hearing, proposed text amendments to the zoning and subdivision chapters of the land development ordinance.
Anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Mr. Mayor, I move the hearing be closed.
Second. We have a motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B1, Ordinance Number 20-32 adopting the Unified Land Development Ordinance. No motion is necessary as this is just a first reading. I would like to say that staff has been working on the update to the Land Development Ordinance, now referenced as the Unified Land Development Ordinance, for about a year. We have gone painstakingly through all 280-some pages, done lots of research, looked at what a lot of other communities do, and tried to really give a good update to the Land Development Ordinance just with our time, so save the city a significant amount of money as well. But first reading, so if you have any other, if you hear anything in the community or have any questions yourself, don't hesitate to reach out so we can get your questions answered.
When was the last time this was really gone through?
Twenty-two years ago.
So, a 22-year update.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to note that this has all gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yes.
Every part of it.
Every.
In pieces, so that they would have time to digest it.
Yes.
And kick it back to staff and to make any adjustments, any of it. So, I think there's, there has been a lot of input into this.
Yes.
And anything that's 22-years-old that needs to be adopted, it's, I would say it's, you know, it's probably time, and it's good to see this moving forward.
Yes.
Any other comments? Because again, there is no action to be needed tonight. All right, move on to reports of city offices.
Item 9, Reports of City Offices. The Finance Department report is included in the consent agenda. Item 9A, Report of City Physician Kipton L. Anderson, M.D., regarding the COVID-19 statistics.
Dr. Anderson, would you come up, please? Part of our mask ordinance was to get a report from you a monthly basis while this was in effect. So, I would, I know you had sent the city an email which highlighted what was happening. I guess I would just ask you maybe to highlight that in person and answer any questions that might be here for you. Name and address, please.
Kip Anderson, 3683 Regency Place. So, yeah, I did email out last week an update. Basically, since the previous meeting back in November, the hospital census of COVID patients has been steadily a little bit lower. Again, today it was six. That's about what it's been running the last month or so. Fortunately, nobody on a ventilator and only two in the ICU. We've been averaging about one to two COVID admissions a day. And cases seem to like, have been slowing down considerably in our office, which is a very good thing. We were fortunate enough not to see an uptick over Thanksgiving, which is something I think we are all very, very happy about and hope that the Christmas season will show the same. We have started to vaccinate here in Columbus. The hospital did end up receiving the Pfizer vaccine and started giving vaccinations to medical staff last week, and they were, will continue to do so. The Moderna vaccine is apparently en route, and the Health Department anticipates receiving that either tomorrow or Wednesday, and will start to do that vaccination as well. The Health Department has put out a fairly, I guess I would say thorough plan for what they'd like to do. Initially, it's healthcare workers, first responders, and then working to get the nursing home population vaccinated. That's probably going to take a couple months, or not, excuse me, at least three or four weeks to get that, through that phase. And then they will move to what they call Phase 1B, which will be vaccinating essential employees, which includes like schoolteachers, police officers, and a variety of other folks. And then they are working to establish an orderly apparatus for vaccinating the general population. And obviously trying to emphasize getting the more older and more vulnerable population vaccinated first. It's going to be a challenge, but we believe they'll be able to do it. All of the population, or excuse me, the general community population vaccinations as of now will be handled through the Health Department. As far as the, my opinion on the mask mandate, I think the way things are going right now, we are well on our way to being able to go with the February sunset date on this. Certainly hope so. On a personal note, I have not received any negative feedback from anybody on this decision, and I have been personally thanked on multiple occasions by employees of grocery stores, Walmarts, and other places like that for what the city council has done in regards to the mask mandate. Beyond that, I would say that the medical community just wants to continue to emphasize the three Cs, avoiding crowds, close contact, and confined spaces. And God willing, we will be getting through this by spring.
Thank you, Doctor. Any questions for Dr. Anderson?
I have one question. Papillion, their city council had a clause in their mask mandate that when the hospital numbers were down, I guess we weren't copying the right mandate when we followed ours. At what point would you think we could do that? And why do you think February 23rd is a drop-dead date?
Well, that date really wasn't anything that I came up with, to be honest with you, Rich.
You've had some opinion here, so let's, we need to hear that because you're the medical advisor, you're trying to guide us, you're trying to keep people safe. People ask me all the time, why do we, where is it going? Maybe the questions you're not getting, I'm getting. So, maybe now that we're in front of the public, you can tell us.
Well, I think we'd certainly like to get through the holiday season and make sure we're not seeing an uptick with that. And as we get more and more people vaccinated, then, you know, the closer we get to that 60% to 70% immunity of the population, the easier and easier this is going to get for all of us. And it's just going to take time. And there's, I don't think anybody has an exact, you know, date when we can say we're out of the woods. That's not going to be quite a long time yet. But, but to maybe loosen up some of this stuff, that seems to me like a reasonable date.
Okay, fair enough.
No questions, I just have a couple comments. I think it'd be important to point out that 11/20 went right before we started the mask mandate. There was, for Platte County, this is from East Central District, 867 cases were that day. And as of 12/21 today, they were down to 170. So, I think that's important. I'd also like to maybe put on the agenda for next meeting for us to revisit the mask mandate and maybe look at rescinding it and making it a recommendation versus a mandate.
Tara?
I don't know how much discussion we can have on this, but the way that we would change the ordinance in place is to come up with a new ordinance that repeals the old ordinance or amend the current ordinance on the books. Does that make sense? So, if we want to come up with a new date or different protocols in the ordinance, then I think amending it would probably be the easiest thing to do, for the date to change, for the whatever language in the ordinance to change. Does that make sense?
Well, I, I get.
Go ahead.
Well, I would agree that there, to amend it, but in some way where, I mean, if we are going to amend it, if we, like, tonight, now we have to wait two weeks before it comes up again. I mean, and it just gets extended if there's a way to have it on the agenda regularly so that if we look at it in January and say, yeah, this is, we can rescind this now, the numbers look good. But if we wait until January, then we have to put it off for two weeks.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying you have to wait till January to put it off any longer. I'm just saying if the city council wishes to change the date or to change the language in the ordinance, then we can work on amending the current and bring that forward to adopt or bring forward one to just repeal what was passed on the old ordinance. Either one is doable and up for, can be up for consideration at the next meeting.
But that has to be presented before the meeting, is that what you're saying?
No, I'm just saying we would have to work that out before the meeting.
What, I think what Tara's getting at is we can have an item on the agenda at the next council meeting. She needs some input from councilmen. What do you want that item to be?
Right.
Do you want it to be a rescind, a rescindation? Oh, I don't know if that's such a word. You want to remove the ordinance that's there, or do you want to amend the ordinance?
Well, I think what I was looking for was discussion at the next meeting with the opportunity to, if the numbers continue to decrease, the opportunity to be able to vote, rescind it, or to extend it a couple weeks.
Well, unfortunately, we didn't do what Papillion did. They put a mechanics in there that said, once the number went below the hospital occupancy, then the thing went away. You know, and, you know, like I said, we copied the wrong mandate, you know, and apparently now we're stuck scrambling here.
Nope, we can amend it. You can amend it.
Yeah, we can amend it, but you had it built right into the mandate, and it went away. And Papillion.
Councilman Barr.
I'd like to remind the council members that are here and the audience that are here that we've lost in Platte County 39 lives already to this. I don't think a few more days wearing a mask is going to be that big a chore.
Well, the problem, Charlie, is that, take, for instance, your place of business. You have different rules when people walk into your place of business than I would have in my place of business, even though I say I have a mask mandate. We have churches now that, their ushers are walking around looking for people without masks. That's not what this is all about, kids. It's not one person against another.
No.
And that's what we've created. That's what we've created. And they quote the city mandate without reading it. They don't even understand that says you can be six feet away.
That's correct.
Like these council people. But no, they said, it's the city mandate, where's your mask?
Hand them a copy of the ordinance and explain it to them.
They handed them a mask instead.
That's what you're doing.
Yeah. So, this is the problem we've created here. Because we copied somebody's, not knowing what we were doing.
We did what we were doing, Rich. We did the same ordinance as the mass majority of communities. It's not that anybody didn't know what they were doing. We saw input from all of our local healthcare providers and East Central health districts.
We had no way out of it. There's no way out of it.
Yes, there is. I just told you, we can amend it.
Not as easy as Papillion did.
Well.
Go ahead, Ron.
I, I think, I think we, we can amend it. I would like to see us come up with a process that we can amend it. I would also like in there, it being we're coming into the Christmas holiday, you know, if we have a surge after the Christmas holiday, maybe we need to wait a little bit longer. But I think we need to have the discussion at the next council meeting that we can rescind or we can adjust to whatever, whatever process we can use to make that. I've got, I've got some business people that are, that are pushing it pretty hard.
Well, I think what we need is just the direction from maybe council.
Yeah, rather than.
Council to tell us just what can we put together.
Right.
Because I think that the discussion needs to be, what can we do? And so, we just need, we need to hear, what are those parameters as far as how to move forward with the ideas that might be presented by council?
There's one other thing you guys can consider. At this point, the mandate was called by a special meeting. You could wait till what you're talking about, January, to have discussion on it and then potentially call it at that point as a special meeting. But again, that's, that's up to you guys. I think Tara's asking for direction on if somebody wants to bring it forth on an agenda to have enough specificity as what's called forth in our council rules so it can be put on it.
The point, so what you're getting at from a legal, from the council rule standpoint is there needs to be some substance to what you want brought forth, some specifics. Is that right?
Right.
Well, we'll believe you.
Yeah, your council rules say that it has to be submitted by the deadline with enough basically information there so the agenda item can comply with the Open Meetings Act. So, that's what the request would have to be.
Neil, are we allowed to have a couple different options in there, such as amend or terminate?
You're going to.
Depending on the.
I think you're going to want to be clear because otherwise you're going to have multiple, multiple options, multiple strike-throughs or add-ons or everything is going to cause more confusion than I think what you guys are hoping to do besides having one clear option that you're going to vote for.
May I bounce you?
Well, what you can do is you've got some time if you want to come up with a thought process just so we have enough time to make it an agenda item for the next meeting. Doesn't have to be determined exactly tonight, just so it gets to you so it becomes an item on the agenda in the proper form, right?
Okay, I can understand that.
What she's after is to have something in front of us that the public knows because of, everything's got to be printed, it's got to be part of the agenda. The public's got to be able to see it so that we then can discuss it and it can be part of the agenda. And that we'd have up to, what is it, the Wednesday before? I mean, you need some time to get it done. Don't throw it at her the last day, she'll be mad at you.
Please. Right, rather than criticize what's not in it, tell us what you do want in it.
Sure.
Right? Just tell us what you want in it. Because we can't bring something forward and the public not know what we're voting on. So, we have to have, we have to be specific. The next item on the agenda is 9B, Police Department Update on the Mask Ordinance.
Chuck Shear, Police Chief, Columbus PD. Asked, directed by the mayor and councilwoman before you again today to give you an update on where we are with the mask ordinance and our abilities to enforce it. Since the inception of the ordinance on the 28th of November, we had 13 calls. Since my last report to you folks on the 3rd of December, we had an additional eight calls. So, we have not been overburdened as thought by some of the council members that we would be getting an enormous amount of calls on this. Of those eight calls, two were asking for guidance on how to proceed with the mandate, and six, they required officers to respond, to either talk to the managers or patrons at businesses about complying with the mandate. And as of this, this writing, we've not issued any citations or taken any enforcement action. It's all been by their compliance. So, it's not been an overly taxing type of ordinance to enforce. We're getting less than, on the average, less than one call per day, which I think is showing good compliance by our community. And so, it has not been a big problem for us. So, that would be my input to you all. Any questions for me?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
And the reports of council committees.
Item 10A, Public Property Safety and Works Committee of December 14th, 2020. Item 10A1, Determine Necessity for Replacement and Extension of Sidewalk at 4812 Howard Boulevard. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that the city engineer be authorized to send a notice of construction to the property owner at 4812 Howard Boulevard to repair existing sidewalk along 48th Avenue and extend sidewalk to the north property line.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second. Motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10A2, Request from the City of Columbus to Vacate 25th Avenue from 14th Street North to the alley. The Public Property Safety and Works Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that the vacation of the street right-of-way of 25th Avenue from north, from the north line of 14th Street to the south line of the alley between 14th and 15th Streets, all lying adjacent to Lot 8, Block 50, and Lot 5, Block 49, Original, to the City of Columbus, be approved.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 10B, Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee of December 15th, 2020. Item 10B1, Amend Resolution Number R20-88, Schedule of Fees by Increasing the Regular Punch Card Rate to $2.65 for Quail Run and Vanburg Golf Courses and changing the Senior Punch Card Rate to $2.20 for Quail Run and Vanburg Golf Courses. The Public Property, or the Public Finance Judiciary and Personnel Committee recommends to the mayor and city council that the schedule of fees be amended to increase the regular punch card rate to $2.65 and to change the senior punch card rate to $2.20 for Quail Run and Vanburg Golf Courses.
Mr. Mayor, recommend that report be adopted.
Second. A motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion?
Just maybe add that Golf Pro will be doing a survey on similar golf courses for rates to bring forward to us in the near future.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Oops, that was early, sorry. There we go. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, Appointment of Joel Volartson as firefighter EMT and hazmat tech.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name of Joel Volartson for appointment to the position of firefighter EMT hazmat tech. For the council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of paid firefighter. Mr. Volartson was certified for firefighter EMT hazmat tech by the Civil Service Commission at their meeting held November 30th, 2020. Joel Volartson lives in Columbus, Nebraska, and was a graduate of Palmyra High in Palmyra, Nebraska. He has attended the University of Nebraska-Lincoln and received his associate's degree in emergency medicine from Durham Tech in Durham, North Carolina. Joel is currently employed at Midwest Medical as a paramedic, station manager. He has previously held paramedic positions with the Valley County Health System in Ord, Nebraska, and with the Durham County Emergency Medical System. Do we have a motion to ratify the mayor's appointment, please?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to ratify. Any discussion? Why don't we just ask for a comment? We'll take a vote and then we'll ask you to just say a few words. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Chief, Joel, whatever, please.
Thank you, Fire Chief Dan Miller. Joel was a recent participant in our Volunteer Firefighters Academy, tried out the last time for our career personnel, but was a little bit surprised, I think, by the physical agility test. Only missed it by eight seconds, but he improved by a full minute on the second, second round and passed with line color. So, we're looking very forward to have Joel onboard with his paramedic experience especially. He's got a lot of, a lot of great experience to bring, so.
Just want to say thank you for the opportunity and I am very much looking forward to this.
Thank you.
Glad to have you.
Item 13B, Appointment of Brian Kenwood to the Columbus Board of Airport Commissioners for a two-year term.
Council members, with your permission, the Mayor would like to recommend Brian Kenwood for the Columbus Board of Airport Commissioners. Brian Kenwood is originally from Lincoln, Nebraska. Having come from a Nebraska aviation pioneer family, Brian followed in those footsteps by becoming a pilot at the age of 17. He has since become a commercial instrument, multi-engine pilot, and certified flight instructor. Along with becoming a pilot, Brian is an airframe and power plant mechanic with inspection authorization. Brian and his wife Crystal and son Alistair moved to Columbus in March of 2020, where he became the Aviation Maintenance Coordinator for MPPD's Flight Department. He has been working with MPPD and local aviation officials to host an FAA safety team meeting at the Columbus Airport, and he would love to see the Columbus Airport host other events for aircraft owners and operators and aviation enthusiasts. Brian ultimately hopes to increase general aviation excitement in Columbus and inspire the next generation of pilots and mechanics to join the industry. Brian's free time is most likely spent doing anything related to aviation. He enjoys fishing and vacationing and loves to travel with his family to air shows. Council members, do we have a motion to accept this nomination?
Move to accept the nomination.
We have a motion and a second to accept the nomination. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item 13C, Appointment of Brad Keys to the Columbus Board of Airport Commissioners for a two-year term.
Council members, with your permission, the Mayor would like to appoint Brad Keys to the Columbus Board of Airport Commissioners. Brad Keys is a Columbus resident and has been involved in construction management and building construction for over 30 years. He has worked for Walker Foundation for 25 years as a job site manager and heavy equipment operator, and he owns and operates two small businesses in Columbus, Midwest Welding and Machine and Trackside Storage. Brad acquired his private pilot's license in 2019. He is interested in helping the aviation community and bringing positive ideas to the table for the betterment of the Columbus Municipal Airport. Council members, do we have a motion for this appointment?
So moved.
Motion and a second to approve this appointment. Any discussion?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
I know we've got these two gentlemen and then we appointed, reappointed three. Are we at full?
Yes, at this point we are.
This makes all the-
This was a year that was really unique in that every appointment came up at the same year. You know, most of the time they're staggered, but the way they all fell together this year, all five appointments were either, were up, so it was either people renewing or asking to stay on or, you know, needing to find new ones. So we're full now with a full airport board. All right, we move on to, well, it's yours.
Item 13D, application of-
We need to vote on that.
Oh, we didn't vote on it.
All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item 13D, application of Kevin Bennett for preliminary plat of Highland Park Church 2nd Edition, 4115 38th Street. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move that application of Kevin Bennett for the preliminary plat of Highland Park Church 2nd Edition be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Highland Park Church 2nd Edition. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Item 13E, Application of Granville Custom Homes Incorporated for preliminary plat of New Frontier Subdivision, East 14th Avenue and Armory Drive. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the preliminary plat of New Frontier Subdivision be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of New Frontier Subdivision. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13F, Quote from Civic Plus and the Amount of $27,547 for Sports and Activities Software.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from Civic Plus for software be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I think it's worth discussion.
Yep.
I see Mr. Moore, if you want to do it.
No, Doug is here and he has Betsy with him. He'd like to introduce you all to our new park and rec coordinator and talk about this item.
Doug Moore, Public Property Director. I would like to introduce, we have a new position that started in November, our park and rec coordinator. Betsy Eckhart is, has filled that position. She's been with us for about six weeks.
Yeah.
She hit the ground running. She's the one who came up with the Civic Plus software program. So if you have any questions, go ahead and ask her. It kind of fits into what we're trying to do. We already have Civic Plus as another program that we have, so this is kind of an add-on in the park and rec area. We will also be using it at the aquatics. Our software at the aquatics is really old and difficult to use. It's sportsman and it comes up for renewal in March. This kind of works to put this new plan in place. So like I said, if you have any questions, then welcome Betsy aboard.
Well, first of all, welcome aboard, Betsy. And then there was, you did a great job with the packet of putting information together, explaining what this is. Maybe just give a broad overview.
Yeah, let the people know what's going on.
Mainly for the public to know just why is this something we need and what do you hope to get from it?
Sure. Well, first, it's really to help move the Aquatic Center software into a more modern system that's easier to use. They'll be able to do program registrations a lot easier. But then from my side of it, for parks and rec, we will be able to schedule our fields. So that means like Gerard. And it also puts it on a public platform so that our community can see when the fields are gonna be used, when there might be an opening. Same with like Frankfurt Square, other parks in the city. So if they requested a wedding or an event, they would be able to know if the space is available. And it also is an easy access for our permits that we have, and then it ties it right to their accounts and that all stays on file digitally.
And is this something that like if a ball team is coming to town for a tournament, this will help coordinate that?
Yep.
I saw where you can pay if there's fees that are for any of, and all of that. And when you say aquatics, it's not just, it's not just the Aquatic Center. This also applies to Pawnee Plunge, right?
Yes, yes.
And all the fees and the activities that take place there.
Yep, and concession stands, everything that that would entail. So yes, if we were going to be bringing a tournament to Columbus, we would be able to coordinate the fields through Civic Rec to be able to utilize them to the best of our ability. And then the community would also be able to see when teams were playing. And then obviously with Pawnee Plunge, we would be able to do membership rates through that. And then they also have concessions and stuff. So it's a real easy way that really ties into the systems that we already have.
Awesome. Any questions?
I have-
And you need to state your address, name and address too, so we officially get you on the record.
Betsy Eckhart and 260 Polk Street, Nasiola. And so I have been a resident of Columbus up until I got married, but I had been a resident of Columbus for most of my life. And then I had worked for the last nine years at the Columbus YMCA as their membership, marketing, and finance director. So I wore a lot of hats. And sports and activities were a big part of that, being with YMCA, so. No, you're okay. So anybody have questions?
Any questions for Betsy? Any questions for Doug?
Welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Civic Plus. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13G, Comments from the Mayor and City Council Members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members have any comments?
Just have a great Christmas, healthy, happy one.
I would echo that. I'm sure all council members wish everyone a happy and safe holiday. I would just add one thing because there's been a lot of public comment and discussion the last few weeks about trains in Union Pacific. I want the public to understand that we have engaged Union Pacific, we have talked with them about what we believe are some continuing issues in our downtown area. That's just a back-and-forth conversation that we have going with them, but I think it's an important one to get started. Along with that, we have made a commitment to start moving forward with a downtown viaduct discussion that will become a real thing as we move into the new year. So I think it's just important that the public know this is something that we're working on, we're trying to address, and there will be plenty of time for discussion as we get into January and February and try to bring something forth, forward to the council and the public. Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
I would like to say goodbye to 2020.
If we all get a chance, we can kick it out the door. How would that be? All right, we'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, Resolution Number R20-144, amending the schedule of fees by changing the regular punch card rate to $265 and the senior, super senior punch card rate to $220 at Quail Run and Vanburg Golf Courses.
Mr. Mayor, recommend the resolution number R20-144 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R20-144. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Yep, there we go. Motion passes.
Item 14B, Resolution Number R20-145, approving necessity for sidewalk improvements along the east property line of Lot 6, Am Pride 2nd Edition, with the final construction to be completed by April 15th, 2021, at 4812 Howard Boulevard.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R20-145 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R20-145. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, Resolution Number R20-146, approving the deferment of special assessment for street improvement district number 178, 3rd Avenue from 8th Street to South 5th Street for Greg Mellinger and Cindy Jo Mellinger.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of resolution number R20-146.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R20-146. Any discussion?
Just would like to say that this is what you all approved at the Board of Equalization meeting.
Right. And this is really like an ag deferment, but because of the timing and things, it is what it is. Yes, okay. Thank you. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance is on their first reading. Item 15A, Ordinance Number 20-33, creating street improvement district number 185, East 14th Avenue from 23rd Street to North Corporate Limits.
Mr. Mayor, move that the rules be suspended and ordinance number 20-33 be read by number only.
We have a motion and a second to read ordinance number 2033 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 20-33.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of ordinance number 20-33.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 20-33 for the, this is East 14th Avenue and 23rd to the north corporate city limits. Just where do the north corporate city limits stop for the public's notice? I have a map in front of me.
Just south of the canal.
Okay, all right. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 15B, Ordinance Number 20-34, creating street improvement district number 186, the alley between 14th and 15th Streets and 28th and 29th Avenues.
Mr. Mayor, I move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 20-34 be read by number only tonight.
Second. I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 23, to read ordinance number 20-34 by number only. Any discussion?
Hasn't this been in front of us already?
Not creation of the district.
Okay.
But yes, it's, this item has been, just not in the creation.
All right, no further discussion. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 20-34.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number dash 20-34 be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 20-34. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 15C, Ordinance Number 20-35, creating street improvement district number 187, 25th Street from 33rd Avenue West, 255 feet.
Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number 20-35 be adopted. Or wait, the rules be, excuse me, the rules be suspended and ordinance number 20-35 be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to read ordinance number 20-35 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I move, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I move ordinance number 20-35 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 20-35. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 15D, Ordinance Number 20-36, levying special assessments on the street improvement district number 178, 3rd Avenue from 8th Street to South 5th Street and sewer extension district number 46, Lost Creek Parkway from 38th Street to west of 10th Avenue.
Mr. Mayor, may the rules be suspended and ordinance number 20-36 be read by number only?
Second. We have a motion and a second to read ordinance number 20-36 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 20-36.
I move for the adoption of ordinance number 20-36.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 20-36. Any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
At the Board of Equalization meeting, we had some citizens that expressed concerns about some work that wasn't completed, and I was just wondering if we have looked at that and if we have addressed it or what has happened in that regard.
Yes. The Traffic Control Device Committee met about those items and we discussed them at length, and they weren't not completed, they just weren't completed the way the neighborhood would like, but we are looking into how we can address those concerns. but we are looking into how we can address those concerns with design, uh, changes. So we'll have to work those out and bring them back to you as a council or, or public property most likely, um, first. With recommended.
Were the people in that neighborhood informed of that decision then, or?
Well, we haven't made an official decision yet. Traffic Control Device is just a staff committee. So we discussed all the issues, came up with some alternatives, and engineering is exploring the alternatives. And then when we find the best alternative, we'll bring it forward to public property.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I, I do know that two or three of the key neighbors in, in that discussion from that evening, Beth were, were involved, knew of that meeting that was going on and the follow-up that will be coming. So at least, at least some of them have, know that it's, it's a process in the works right now.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on the second reading.
Item sixteen A, ordinance number two zero dash two seven, amending section nine one point oh one of chapter ninety-one of title nine of ordinance number oh five dash four seven, Columbus City Code, adopting the limited applications of the two thousand eighteen international fire code. No motion is needed. This is second reading. If there's any public comment.
All I would say, and I would say it about all four of these items that are coming up, they are, there's, there's plenty of time for public input. Very seldom do you get any. And these are the type of things that some contractor or builder might hit you with a year from now and say, well, when did that change or how come that? So that's number one. The airing of this is public. They know about it. They can come forward. Number two is we're adopting not anything that's unique to the City of Columbus. We're adopting either national codes or state codes. So we're not making something that's unique to our community. We're only becoming, we're actually becoming lawful because these need to be adopted because they're in, put in place.
Item sixteen B, ordinance number two zero dash two eight, amending chapter one hundred and fifty of title fifteen of ordinance number oh five dash four seven, Columbus City Code, adopting the two thousand eighteen Uniform Plumbing Code. Again, no motion is necessary. This is second reading. Item sixteen C, ordinance number two zero dash two nine, amending chapter one hundred and fifty of title fifteen of ordinance number oh five dash four seven, Columbus City Code, adopting the two thousand eighteen International Residential Code. This is the second reading. Item sixteen D, ordinance number two zero dash three zero, amending chapter one hundred and fifty of title fifteen of ordinance number oh five dash four seven, Columbus City Code, adopting the two thousand eighteen International Building Code. This is the second reading.
Brings us up to consideration of payroll and bills on file.
Item eighteen A, ARL Credit Services.
Mr. Mayor, I ask to be abstained from voting on this agenda item because I am, um, owner of ARL Credit Services and therefore have a conflict of interest.
I move that Councilmember Jablonsky be allowed to abstain from voting on this agenda item and to suspend the city council rules requiring him to leave the council chambers during the discussion and vote on this agenda item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I recommend the bill for mayoral credit service be adopt, approved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bill to ARL Credit Service. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favors signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Meeting adjourned.